Listen only.
Attendees, okay, sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the planning and zoning meeting for May 6, 2020 at 6:30. Would you do a roll call? Mark?
I will. Ray Antonasi?
Yeah.
Richard Antonetti?
Here.
Ken Demir is not here. Dan DeVito?
Here.
Lou Esposito is not here. Bob Marinero?
Here.
Dave Pope?
Here.
Mark Ramon?
Here.
Lou Cavallo?
Here.
Anthony Diesel?
Yep, Basil, yep.
Thank you.
Was Pope present? Did I hear Rip Pope?
He is present.
Then therefore, Commissioner, wondering what? Commissioner Dan DeVito will not be replacing Commissioner Pope. Okay? He will act as an alternate tonight. Did you hear that, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I will, I'll read the, I'll read the presentation in terms of the meeting. This is a web-based virtual meeting where we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being recorded, both video and audio. Mark Masood, the land use administrator, and Michael Simmons, the town's IT director, will be the meeting administrators. A link to the video audio will be posted to the town's website. Most people attending this meeting will be muted. The commissioners and staff will not be muted. Individuals will be unmuted at the time they are recognized to ask a question or make a presentation. Presentations may be made by applicants and their agents when appropriate and permitted by the commission. Other attendees will be permitted to speak only during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Commissioners and staff will generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting unless they are attending via telephone only. Applicants and members of the public should feel free to leave their video on or off. However, they will be asked to turn on their video when speaking. The picture tells a thousand words and can be useful in conveying your meaning. If video is not available for you, you will not be precluded from speaking or providing public testimony. During public hearings, individuals desiring to speak will be asked to state their name and give their home address. We will read the public hearing rules at the start of the first public hearing of the meeting. Please use the chat feature or the raise your hand feature for the meeting administrators to know that you raised your hand to speak. If an applicant or agent needs to submit additional documents to the commission, which was not distributed in advance of the meeting with the rest of the materials, the application will be continued to the next meeting so new documents can be made available to the public. Members of the public may only speak during a public hearing. If a member of the public speaks outside of a public hearing, it creates an audio or video disruption. They may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the meeting administrators or the chair.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that as an opening to the meeting. It does state basically the conditions that we're working under and we will try to do the best we can and if there is any interruption during the meeting, we will try to correct it to get back online. I'd like to move on now with the rest of our meeting. The matter on the agenda is exception, accepting the minutes of the meeting held on March 4, 2020. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Mark Ramon, I'll make that motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting, March 4, 2020.
Ray Antonasi has seconded that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Hearing no, nays, any extensions? Hearing none. Motion is carried unanimously. Moving on further on the agenda. The staff report. Mark, do you have anything to report at this time or shall we move forward?
Let's move forward, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. As far as the chairman's report, I will just make a few comments that I have to commend all the people that have been involved in trying to set up this meeting so that we could present for the town of Watertown matters that are vital for the growth of our town. And by having the, this meeting, we will be determining direction for some new projects and some old projects. We will try to do our best in the best interest of the town. The next matter on the agenda is dealing with public hearings. The first one is Attorney Franklin Pilasey, on behalf of Blasia Motors, requesting a site plan permit utilizing property of less than five acres for a new and used automobile dealership. And a permit for a new automobile sales and also approve the site plan modification at 669 Straits Turnpike, map 121, block 84C, lot 7, located in the B-SC Zone District. Attorney Pilasey, are you here?
I am.
Any comments?
Just to state that this is a continuation of a public hearing that opened in February, I guess, or March, actually. And we have submitted everything that has been asked. Since the last public hearing session, we were asked for some additional submittals, which Scott Myers worked through with Mark Masad and I provided an updated statement of use. And I believe town staff has reviewed everything that has been submitted and I'm not aware of any outstanding issues. So I would ask the commission to close the hearing and to vote tonight. Having said that, I do have present with me Scott Myers and Jason Rodriguez and Blue Moon Architecturals so that we have everybody here that was involved in the last public hearing session that is available in case there are any questions from any commission or staff.
We're not muted. This is different.
Are you now going to ask, is there any public that would like to speak on this matter? Any public? Any public? Hearing none. Any commissioners have any comment on this matter?
Through the chair, I have one question for the applicant. We have received from, as additional comments from the adjacent property owner at the Ivy at Watertown. We've added these as conditions of approval. Does the applicant have any difficulty with any of these conditions and if so, why? Is the question.
We, we have seen conditions of approval on a draft motion. And I am not aware that there are any issues with the conditions of approval. Is that correct? The answer is yes, there are no issues with conditions of approval. We have them stated at 1 through 8 on the draft motion.
Mark Masad, did you hear that?
I did. I distributed to the commission as Commissioner Antonasi indicated some comments and requests that were made that were asked to be submitted on behalf of Ivy at Watertown.
And
ask you to, could you just, I don't have them in front of me unfortunately, to comment on those or just state those so everyone is aware of what those are.
Yeah, I, you want me to read them? If you're not sure everybody's good with it, okay? I see a retaining wall with fencing. Is it decorative? I would prefer that over black chain. That's one. Two, would they consider adding a separate six-foot panel fencing in the rear to the corner of the property? I know we are above them, but that would help buffer us. That's second. Three is, is the landscaping abutting to rear portion something that will grow? It would be nice to have evergreens that will grow up to 20 feet. And fourth is, I would like the town to address service hours to keep the noise control and stipulate where they offload vehicles so they don't block our access and visibility. Those were the four concerns of the neighbor. Just wanted, and you had it set, Mark, you had that set for comments from adjacent property owner and add as conditions of approval. I just want to make sure that that it's okay with you.
And that's at the discretion of the commission if you feel that those are appropriate to add as conditions of approval as well, I would add.
Thank you.
We have, the, the applicant has no issue with those conditions with the exception of, we submitted in the statement of use, the proposed hours. So we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with the statement of hours as, as proposed in the statement of use.
Right.
Hearing that, I believe we can take a motion. If there is no other comments from commissioners, I think we can take a motion to close the public hearing.
May I ask, I have a hand raised. May I, I'm just going to attempt to let that person speak before you do that.
Who wants to speak?
Catherine Camara.
I don't hear her. Was this the same person that spoke at the last hearing?
I'm no longer muted. They had me on mute, so can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so my public comments. And I guess you should know this, that I was hitting the button that said raising my hand, but it took a few minutes to recognize that. So it's a public participation that you're allowing in these hearings. You probably have to wait a few minutes. So my comments are that this is a smaller lot than the last time that you allowed less than five acres. It's actually getting smaller than the one you allowed at Bunker Hill and Straits Turnpike. So I have to question why you continue, if you go along with this, why you would continue to allow a change in this zone. I mean, one is one thing, for whatever reason, but if you're going to continue to do that, then there's no point in having a five-acre zoning regulation. My second issue is the crime that comes along with car dealerships. And unfortunately, I wasn't prepared and I didn't mail something in. There was definitely an article in 2017 and then there was just an arrest, I think in February, no, several months ago. Okay, in 2017, it was a huge deal about stealing tires. It was 60,000 tires being stolen around Watertown and Waterbury or something like that. Recently, it was a really good job commended by our officers for finding these guys. One was a fugitive. They were from out of state and they were, I think, the BMW place working some sort of a scam that they had been doing. So coming along with another car dealership, you have to consider that there's these criminal aspects and that you're putting this in front of a brand-new the Ivy, which you approved and everyone thought was wonderful. And where will these criminals run if they, you know, are they going to run through the Ivy to go to the back to get out, you know, down Bunker Hill? It's quite possible. It's, it's, you know, yes, it's not a neighborhood, but for those people living in a assisted living, it is their neighborhood. That is, I think, all I wanted to say. So I would ask you to really consider those things before you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public? Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public? Hearing none. At this time, is there anybody from the commission that would like to comment? Hearing none. From the applicant, any further comment?
No further comment. Thank you.
I doubt would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion. Ray Antonasi moved to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion, Lou Cavallo.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any extensions? Any nays? Hearing none, the motion is carried unanimously. Let's move on to the next item. Item number two. Attorney Franklin Pilasey, proposed text amendment to zoning regulation section 21 dash dot four, impervious service coverage for a BO district. Existing 40% proposed to 70%. Would you like to comment, attorney?
Okay, again, Franklin Pilasey, this is another public hearing that was previously opened and continued to April and then again until tonight for the May meeting. I submitted with this a comparison of the different impervious surface coverage percentages for the other districts in Watertown. And it demonstrates that this one is a little bit, nobody really knows where this came from. It's really never been, I don't think there's a property in the BO district that complies, so I think it's, although there's been only a couple of times that anything has been developed in this district in the last 50 years. The one place that was developed is the 365 Main Street building, which is probably 95% coverage. So obviously that regulation was ignored because I know there was no talk of it at the time. But I also provided similar coverages in different nearby towns that also show that all of the typical regulations for this district run anywhere from 65, 75% up to 90%. We're proposing 70%. So I have nothing else to add. I think this is pretty straightforward. It's just a case of correcting a regulation that really nobody knows where it came from and it's never been complied with in the history of zoning, I guess, in this district.
Attorney Pilasey, have you changed anything from a four parking to a 16?
I don't know where the four came from. The application for the site plan, when we get to that on the agenda, is for 16 spaces. The regulations call for 16 spaces. The site plan modification as proposed calls for 16 spaces. I don't know where the four came from. I think that ought to be corrected to say 16 spaces.
I thought that should be noted. Is there any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Any comment from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is. Hold on just a sec.
Yeah, Catherine Camara, 31 Cottage Place, Oakville. I forgot that last time. So I believe this is, we're talking about Mr. Pilasey's property. And I just have to ask you all, if you remember not that long ago that this district was changed, that first he came to you and asked to have his property at the corner there of Route 6 and 63. He was asking for a change to make that BO. And then the commission itself took care of that. But I have to wonder, did anybody ever know at the time, he never said at the time, if I remember, he wanted it, he kept saying that it was just because he wanted his children to be able to use the law, have a law office there with more than one employee. Now we're talking about 16 parking spaces and a whole lot more impervious surface that will probably have a huge effect. If you remember the guy who, on Baldwin Street, brought pictures of his property that gets flooded. Whether that's a state issue, a town issue, that wouldn't be, that doesn't matter when you put that much, 30% more impervious surface. So what I'm, what I just have to ask you to think about is if at the time when he was saying he wanted to just allow his children to have a practice there, you know, I've, I've worked in law for over 30 years and I know small practices and big practices. You can have a small practice. You wouldn't need 16 parking spaces. That never came up at the time. Now we're talking about a pretty big change to that area. And I just think, I just have to wonder if at the time he originally was asking to change it to BO, if he said, oh yeah, and I wanted to make 16 parking spaces. What your thoughts would have been then? Because now it's sort of, okay, now we got the first step, change it to BO and oh, now BO all over town has, has different parking, different impervious surface percentages. But I just, it just never came before you as a package of, you know, I want to just make this little change to allow a couple more employees and 16 more parking spaces and 70% impervious surface. That didn't come as that package. It came when we got, we got closed one thing and now a second thing. And I, I feel that looking at it separately like that, you don't see the picture as it, as it was, what it's changing from, what it will be. Thank you. That was my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public on this matter? Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else from the public?
There does not appear to be, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any comments from commissioners?
For the chair?
Yes.
Rich, the letters that we had talked about from the last meeting, maybe it'd be appropriate to just say that that was, were posted in the minutes.
Yes, they, I, I think they were supposed to be posted in the minutes, the two letters. Technical difficulty and looking at the minutes from that particular meeting, but I believe those two letters should be entered. And it would be noted that those two letters will be again put in, in this meeting. Does that satisfy your? That mattered, Commissioner?
It does. I just wanted to make sure that all commissioners are aware of the letters so that if we do take this to a vote, we are acknowledging what was already sent in to us since it was the last meeting.
Those, those letters were distributed at the last meeting and there was a technical glitch in the minutes. They weren't noted, but it will so be noted and that they were distributed at the last meeting and they will be entered again at this meeting on behalf of those two residents.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any commissioner? Any other comments?
Chairman, a question for you. Do you want, you want to read these letters into the minutes or just have them on the, on the part of the agenda that we have on the website?
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject. I had a conversation with, with Paul Jessel and, and his advice is there's no need to read them into the record because they were previously submitted and are part of the record. And that suffices in terms of having them be part of it. There is no need to, his advice was there's no need to read them into the record.
And, and we will file them again, just in case. I think that would be a good action. They should be part of this particular meeting. Just put them in the record again. Okay?
Will do.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any commissioner? The applicant, any comments?
I'd just state, this is Franklin Pilasey. I would just state that it was always understood that there would be parking associated with this use and the parking site plan is the minimum number of spaces that is required under the regulations and that is what we have always talked about. So I would ask the commission to close the public hearing and consider voting tonight on this amendment. Thank you.
I will at this time accept from the commission, a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have that motion from someone?
Mark Ramon, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing regarding this.
I think it was, Mr., who made the second? Marinero?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Extensions? Hearing none, the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. We're moving on our agenda of new public hearing. This matter was also on our agenda in the past. Is there anyone here to speak to the new matter? An application for Anthony DeBona re-subdivision of an existing
Anybody here on Severpland can come in.
On Loop Road. Loop Road.
It's not time yet, but stay here.
Who's speaking?
We're not on yet.
Franklin, you're, you're, Franklin, move your cell phone.
Okay, one more time. We have an application before us from Anthony DeBona. Resolution, I'm sorry, re-subdivision of the existing subdivision lot, lot on Loop Road, map number 121, block 884C, lot 7. Is there anyone here to speak to behalf of this applicant?
Chairman, point of order, there is a, there is a legal notice for a new public hearing and I'm just looking.
It was posted, right? In the
It was, but we might want to read, read that into the record. Here it is.
I don't have that in front of me. Do you have it, Mark?
I do. I'll take that liberty if you don't mind.
Yes. Would you read it?
Absolutely. Town of Watertown, Connecticut, Planning and Zoning Commission Legal Notice. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of Watertown will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 6, 2020 at 6:30 PM on an application from Anthony DeBona for re-subdivision of an existing subdivision lot, Loop Road, map 121, block 84C, lot 7. This meeting will be a web-based virtual meeting. This meeting will be a web-based virtual meeting. Specific details for access will be posted on the town website, At this hearing, the commission will hear interested persons and receive written communications. A copy of the proposed re-subdivision application is on file in the Planning and Zoning Office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echo Lake Road, Watertown CT, between the hours of nine AM and five PM. A copy of the proposed re-subdivision application is also on file in the town clerk's office, Old Town Hall, thirty-seventh to Forest Street, between the hours of eight-thirty AM and four-thirty PM. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, is twenty-third day of April twenty-twenty and thirtieth day of April twenty-twenty, Raymond Antonasi, Secretary, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any comment from the, for this applicant?
I'm sorry, just a sec while I unmute those that would be speaking for this. Excuse me. And that would, let's see.
You near here?
That would be, let's see. John Mack.
Hello, Mark.
John Mack is here and is unmuted.
Uh, thanks, Mark. It's John Mack, Stewart Summers Company, speaking for Tony DeBona. And this is a two-lot subdivision. Problem is I have you on the phone and the computer. I'm gonna hang up. So this is a two-lot subdivision and it's on Loop Road. It's two-point-one acres in size. And we'll be showing an existing lot and proposed lot with a proposed house. The house is on sewers and public water. We talked to the sewer commission and these find the sewer connection and the water connection. And we added, uh, because of the roof drainage, we added some galleries to the plan for detention. And we did add a catch basin, a yard drain at the beginning of the proposed driveway for the new lot. And then we gave, uh, Mark, I don't know if you got it, but we did a statement for the open space. I emailed that to you. Explaining that we did a lot line revision on this last year in August. And we did give some more, we swapped some land with the Town of Watertown Open Space. We did give them some land, but it wasn't ten percent of the whole parcel, but it was five, four-five. And we think that's, we're not offering any, any more open space. So everything else meets the regulations and I think that should do it. I don't know if Tony is on, Tony DeBona is on the line, but he asked me to, to sit and represent him for this meeting. So if there's any questions.
It appears that there is a rather lengthy resolution on this matter. And also it is therefore resolved that we have prepared one. There are some fourteen points that are added. That'll come up later. But the process that we got to do right now is to see if there's any other individuals that want to speak on this matter. If not, we can move it forward. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there is no indication of any public participation at this point.
Then I think a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
Mark Ramo, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the application from Anthony DeBona.
Ray, Anthony, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those. Who was the last aye?
Bob Marinero.
Tony DeBona.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor again, say aye.
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 Any nays? Abstention, motion is carried unanimously. Gentlemen, moving on to new business. And that gets us back to a matter of, I believe, Mr. Milton, uh, Crew is here.
Uh, he is. Mr. Chairman, just give me a sec to unmute.
Could you put him on, please?
I am attempting to do that.
And this matter, gentlemen, deals with the former Kmart.
He is self-muted.
Okay, I was able to unmute myself.
There we go.
Okay, good.
Welcome, Greg, you're on.
Welcome to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. We're very anxious and anticipation of what is going to be happening at the former site of Kmart and being your proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, I tried to turn on my webcam, but it says you've exceeded your limit of how many, I guess, people can be on camera. Though I'm, I'm not able to do that.
We can hear you clearly.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming everyone has, has the drawings and the, and the application as well as the follow-up letter that I wrote that was dated April twenty-ninth. And what I'll do is I'll try to go through the general application and then look forward to your questions. So this is the portion of the ten-acre mall on Straits Turnpike that was occupied by Kmart until, uh, the end of December of this past year. There we go.
You're on, you're on screen.
Thank you. And so that, that portion of the building had about forty-seven thousand square feet plus about twelve thousand square feet in a partial basement under that block. So of course, as we all know, with respect to the retail sector these days, there really aren't any big box stores that are looking to expand into new areas anymore. And so there has been no interest on the part of any large retailers to just take the same space that was occupied by Kmart. However, uh, the owners have had multiple inquiries and are in negotiations with prospective tenants for smaller portions. Anywhere from roughly two thousand square feet on up to almost fourteen thousand square feet. On the sheet A-one-o-one, that, that floor plan sheet that you have, you'll see that we do have in our plan schematically that we have shown that block divided into six tenant spaces, three large ones and then three, three small ones. By the time this is over and, and that portion is fully occupied, that, that may have switched around. The number of tenants may have changed. Where the demising walls inside are will have changed. But there are certain objectives with this application that we need to achieve. Number one, we have to make this portion of the, of the mall usable by multiple tenants so that they have individual storefronts, individual entrances, area for their own signage, and sort of they have a more cohesive design. As we know, the Kmart block now just had right in the, in the center roughly a covered entryway and that, that was great for Kmart as a single tenant. Everybody came in and out through that way or went around the corner to the Garden Center. In this case, we're trying to place, at this point, six entrances into the building along this east side that faces Straits Turnpike. And so in order to do that and to, to make it pedestrian-friendly, we are wanting to expand the covered walkway, the covered entrance. So to the left, it would go all the way to the corner, the northeast corner of the building and to the, uh, on the, on the right-hand side of the old Kmart entrance, it would go about halfway along that front so that we then be able to have individuals enter and be able to be under weather cover, walking between the stores or in and out, in and out of the stores. But that, that's one objective that we, we need to meet with this, with this application. The second one is that the parking area on the north side of the property has always been underutilized because there are no, there are no storefronts over there, but there's a huge parking area. And we believe that the tenant that we are talking to that will be taking the larger section that you see on the plan that favors the north side of the building, that they expect that, that their customers will likely utilize that, that parking area more. And that's fine. So what we're going to do with that walkway is also build a set of stairs that go down right to a lower landing at grade at that, at that area so they can walk in their cars, walk across the driveway and then undercover, they'd be able to walk up the stairs and have a nice safe way and can, and a way under weather cover to get to the, to that tenant space. On the east side of the building, the rear of the building, we are proposing to add a loading dock. As you see on, on sheet A-one-o-one, A-one-o-one right now, it shows that that loading dock would be shared by two of the tenants. That may change. We're, we're thinking, considering the negotiations we've had with the tenants, that the center store will want to have the loading dock, but the one on the right-hand side, it's not important to them to have access to that loading dock because there's already at grade an overhead door in the back of the building further up to the right. And, and they're intent to use that for receiving, which I guess was one of the ways that Kmart did for the Garden Center. They used that, that entry there. So the loading dock would still be the same size that we're proposing, but it would just have one set of doors going into the, into the, the center tenant space. Also, on the rear of the building, there was for Kmart one exit door that had a set of stairs going down to grade. We're going to keep that, but we want to expand the landing. So as you can see, the left-hand tenant and the center tenant would both have rear exit doors going out to that set of stairs down to grade. So we could, of course, satisfy the building code with regards to means of egress from those spaces. So we provided an elevation sheet, sheet A-two-o-one, that basically shows what we would like to do for that covered walkway in that it would be framed with steel tube columns and it would support a metal roof, standing seam metal roofing that would be sloped, that would have a fascia band on the front and then fascia band where it ties into the existing brick wall of the existing building. And then we would carry that, those same horizontal bands across the front where the Kmart entrance was. If you recall in your mind, the arches, well, we're not going to have the arches anymore. We're squaring off the tops of those openings and just running a horizontal band right across those portals that were there. And then instead of having those portals be brick on the sides, we would wrap that lower portion in metal as well to kind of be compatible with the new look with steel columns that are supporting the other roof. As you also see to the right-hand side, right now, there's a, a guardrail along that sloping retaining wall in front of the former Garden Center. We're going to be replacing that, that guardrail with something that meets current building code standards for safety. And, and that's about it as far as the signage goes. Because we don't have tenants committed yet, signage is not part of our application this evening. So what you're seeing as far as where signs were replaced are just possible locations for signage that would then, as far as the size and what they would look like, would depend on the tenant and of course, the maximum that we're allowed to distribute among the tenants by the zoning regulations. I believe that would be the content of my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners?
Through the chair, Mark Ramo. I'm just wondering, do you have an idea of what type of tenants you're trying to attract or you're going after?
Well, our primary type of tenant is retail and so the discussions are with retail. We had a pre-development meeting with a bunch of the land use officials in town probably a month and a half ago or so. And, you know, we discussed what, what tenants are allowed in the zone as a right, are permitted uses. And retail, of course, is a permitted use there. And so we expect that the first ones to come online will be retail. If there are other tenants, we'll have to come back. If any would require a special permit, then, then we'd certainly have to come back in advance for that. But we have no commitment from anybody other than the initial tenants that we believe are going to be in as a right use.
Thank you. Any other questions from any other commissioner?
Uh, yes, through the chair. Um, I really, Luke Havala.
Thank you.
Uh, I like, I like what you've done with it. Um, I think it's, it's really nice and I think you attract some good retail. Do you think it'll be overwhelming for the amount of parking that'll be in front versus the side with, you know, six stores now?
No, we, we don't, especially because we do think that now with multiple stores, that there will be more use of, of the north side parking lot as well. But retail is retail. You know, the ratio is still the same. There were always, even at Kmart's heyday, there were, there are always some spaces that were available. But retail doesn't really max out anymore. So we expect that it's, it's going to be fine. And actually with multiple stores, you'll have a lot, a lot more people just coming and going instead of just staying put and buying everything in one place.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any commissioner? Any other questions? My question to the applicant there, are you going to do anything in terms of paving the parking area, repaving, seal coating in order to enhance the total look of the new building?
It's, it's possible, but we don't have any definite plans for that right now. We're really focused on, on the facade of the building because of course, that's what all of the interested tenants are, are interested in is they're, they're not going to, they're not going to commit as far as leases go unless they see that there's an approval for the improvements to the facade of the building. So that's what we're focused on right now at present. The whole parking, the, the parking lot is paved, it's striped. And so there is no complication of, I would say, repaving the whole thing. I'm sure that they're going to try to maintain it and do crack sealing or maintenance as, as required.
Is there any kind of movement that you're putting on? Is there any type of opening? Will this be a grand opening of well, one store at a time? Or would it be a grand opening with the other stores included? How do you plan the opening?
Thank you. I I would expect that they are all going to have individual opening dates. Because once you get one one store signed, they usually have very definite. Milestones that you have to hit. The landlord has to hit in turning the space over to them. And they'll have their own. They're not going to want to wait for some other store to get finished before there's some kind of grand opening. So. And and we would have to structure the construction drawings for the building permits in such a way. That the building official and the fire marshal. Would feel free to be able to issue. Space by space certificate occupancy.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners?
Just I I just pray obvious that the fire marshal will be reviewing the site plan, correct?
The site planner, do you mean the construction drawings for the?
I mean, you know, this for for this is sprinkled this building and it has exits and all that, all these sites, right?
Yes, the building has a complete fire suppression system in it and. We already had a preliminary discussion that the fire marshal was party to as well as the building department. In which they know that when we go in for permits to do the tenant fit ups. That as as we go through, we have to modify the sprinkler system to accommodate the demising walls and any. Interior construction and they, of course, will be scrutinizing that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner. Just assuming in from the statements you've made. You're going into this building, you're you're going to do the facade in the entire building as far as a build out. And then what you'll do. Is you'll modify the interior according to the tenant you have. As far as walls, eggs, anything you have to do. So it's building the exterior. And then going in modifying the interior according to their needs.
Correct.
Does that satisfy you, Commissioner?
Fine.
Any other comments? Mark, where do we go from here? Mark, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chair. This is. You hear me? This is an applicant. This is an application under new business for site plan modification. Because the obviously, the site has been developed for for many years, if not decades. And so we have provided to you a a resolution for your for your consideration. It lists several conditions of approval.
We I do have that resolution and I believe all the members should have that resolution. It's a resolution. For this particular proposal. Do the commissioners have it?
I have it.
Listed under the Articles of Agenda. Are you looking to ask this? Or take a vote on this now or wait till we get to the Articles of Agenda?
I I think we can clear. Wait, I'll go with the commission. Commissioners, do you want to clear this matter now? And then the.
I would clear it.
Sure.
Commissioner Antonisi, would you read the proposal and there?
I'm going to simplify this, make it shorter. I'm going to say I I I. I'm going to make a motion that the. The that this site plan approval be approved by the commission in accordance with the resolution. Prepared by Mark Masood, Administrator for Land Use and Building dated. May third, two thousand and twenty. Consisting of two pages.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstention, hearing done and. We hope we can get quick movement on this development, Mr. Crew, and. I hope we can get that building filled with all new businesses. We're anxiously looking forward what you can do.
Thank you. So are we. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Welcome to Watertown.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward on the agenda. What do we? Mark. Because the. So their new business and next is. Okay.
Round number two, Attorney Franklin Pelosi.
That's right. That's what we are. Yeah, but that's the number two.
Mr. Chairman, that's a application. Oh, okay.
It's Attorney Pelosi's tax amendment to the Watertown zoning regulation. New section fifty eight A. Plan plans of development, overlay district. IG eighty. D dash one. A recipient of this, May sixth. What do we do with this one here? Set a public hearing, correct?
It's correct.
We should set a public hearing for June third. I think that's would be the date. Somebody wanted to set that public hearing?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for item number two for June third. Twenty twenty at sixty one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, six thirty P M. Or by virtual meeting.
Thank you. Who seconded, please?
Luke Cavalo.
Luke Cavalo, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, abstain, motion is carried unanimously. Number three. Attorney Pelosi on behalf of Thera Plant LLC, eight five six Echo Lake Road. One oh three, block ninety six, lot one A, site. And modification to construct a two story addition. With with a basement with a matter of fifteen thousand square feet. Footprint and a total of forty five thousand gross square feet. Of this particular area. Do we have comment from Attorney Pelosi? Are you there?
Franklin Pelosi speaking and with me here as part of the presentation. Is Jeff Horn of Thera Plant and Architectural Design and Development and Malone McGroom. They prepared the professional submittals. This, as you know, is a site that was previously developed and then further developed with two prior permits. And now there's an application to add forty five thousand square feet on three levels. We believe that staff has fully reviewed everything and found everything in order with the exception of. Some drainage issues that are outstanding and the applicant is aware that any approval. Which is hoped for tonight will be subject to the town engineer's approval. And potentially modifications of any of the drainage issues. So with that, we're all here and prepared to answer any questions on any of the submittals.
You you have those four points from the town engineer in front of you, Franklin?
We have, yes, I believe we have those.
So that will be added on to the current resolution.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure I have all of the town engineers' comments other than the fact that it has to. That he will be having input and final approval on the final drainage issues.
I noticed Michael Grillo has been added. Is he with you, Franklin?
I know he's not. He was premature. I just muted. I just muted him, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I don't see. I don't see the engineer's letter with the packet on the website.
That was added just within a matter of a few hours ago.
Okay.
And.
Paul, Paul Benevich, you're.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. I did write a letter saying I had some issues with the. Stormwater treatment that the engineer proposed. Also, we didn't address the water quality volume.
Do you have in front of you, Paul, those four points?
Okay, yes, those those are my points, Mr. Chairman.
Could you please read them for the meeting?
I don't have them in front of me. Mark, do you have them? I'm sorry.
Hold on, I have a copy of that if you'd like.
I have them also, so. You want me to read? You want to read them, Mark? All right, all right. I have reviewed the plan stated April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, revised May fourth, two thousand and twenty. The drainage analysis dated May fourth, two thousand and twenty by Malone and McGroom and have the following comments for your consideration. One, add a sequence of construction to the site plan. Two, add a required column to the zoning data table. And include the minimum yards and maximum site coverage requirements as applicable. Add line for maximum allowable storage cover, building coverage, pardon me, and show proposed value. Three, this stormwater detention analysis uses the ten year twenty four hour storm. But the requirement is the one hundred year twenty four hour storm volume. Four, based on the Department of Environmental Protection MS four requirements. A site with a directly connected impervious area greater than or equal to forty percent must retain. One half of the water quality volume as denoted by the two thousand and four. Stormwater Quality Manual. Show calculations. Provide structure for retaining this amount of runoff. Those are his four points.
Yes, sir.
All of those points, all those points are agreeable to be added to a condition of approval.
Mark Musali, did you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I in the in the addendum, I requested that. As you approve the resolution that you add the and I provided the reference to that town engineering report.
Thank you. Any more comment from the commission? Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from the commissioners? Hearing no comments from the commissioners. We might as well move this thing as we did with the other matters. Go forward with the addition to the resolution and I believe. Commissioner Antonisi, do you have that resolution for?
I do. I do. All right. I make a motion. I approve this. Plan by Thera Plant LLC, eight fifty six Echo Lake Road, map number one oh three, block ninety six. Lot one A, site plan modification in accordance with the resolution prepared by Mark Masood. Administrator for Land Use and Building Services. Which was prepared by him on May third, two thousand and twenty. It is consistent of two pages. In addition, I second the approval and the addition of the recommendations of the town engineer. By letter dated May fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Any further comment? Mark Musa, is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So a motion, I take it Commissioner Antonisi, that was a motion?
Yes, it was, Commissioner.
I second it, Richard.
Second from Commissioner Cavalo. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed, attention, hearing none, the motion is passed unanimously. Hey, the next matter is something on there.
Thank you very much.
Somebody have an issue?
I think they said, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. The next matter is Attorney Gail McHaggard and it's a petition. To amend a zoning map and the zoning map changes for the property on. Munson Munson Road, M B L. I believe three seven three oh. Six A to change the R ninety. Portion of the parcel to an R seventy district. We need to set a public hearing, I believe, for June third for this matter.
It is correct, Mr. Chair.
Would somebody like to set this public hearing for June third? And I believe, Mark.
Mark Raymo, I'll set. I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for June third, twenty twenty. At sixty one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, at six thirty P M.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Is that the Commissioner?
Cavalo.
Cavalo, okay. Motion has been dated, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, hearing none, motion is carried unanimously. Under new business, next is. Attorney Thomas Lynch, are you here?
Hold on just a second, Mr. Chair, while I unmute.
This is under old business for those who are trying to follow the agenda. It is old business and it deals with. Perlo Services LLC.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Thomas Lynch, I am here.
Very good. Thank you. We're trying to get you on screen.
There you go.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yep. Give me a second here, Mr. Chairman.
I have panel is Paul is on there and I have panel is, of course, Luke Cavalo, Commissioner Cavalo.
Commissioner, I'm going to recuse myself from the meeting.
Is that Commissioner Cavalo?
Yes.
Note, it should be noted for the record, Commissioner Cavalo has recused himself from the meeting. So noted. Thank you.
He's on here twice and. You know, send the webcam. I did. Here he is. Attorney Lynch, you are on.
I am on in my living room in Milford, Connecticut.
How are you doing, Attorney?
Good, Dick. How are you?
Very good. Thank you. Mark, are you ready to move this?
Mr. Chairman, you have a you have a report. from, from staff. It offers, it, I tried, I attempted to make a final summary of, of the issues of, it was a a long hearing, there was a lot of news, you've heard from, you've heard from a number of, of, of folks on this, on this application. I attempted to summarize for you what the issues fall around in terms of the in terms of the text amendment. The applicant, just a brief recap, the applicant did propose originally text amendments to definitions and to uses in the IR zone to allow for organic processing, organic composting facilities. Staff with the applicant's concurrence or agreement added performance standards to those definitions to attempt to put some standards on any future planned special permit uses that might be applied for under that text amendment. That was provided to you. Let's see. You heard during the public hearing, so let me back up a little bit. So in that, in that vein, we provided a, a resolution for, for approval of those, of that text amendment. Having said that, you've heard during the public hearing, you heard dissenting opinion. You've heard from the Watertown Economic Development Commission, who has consistently voiced their concern and their, and their concern to allowing that type of inoperation adjacent to or within what's considered the Watertown, Watertown Business Park. In the, then, you've, their, their concerns were impact of what they consider to be a more of a heavy, heavy outdoor operation on the, on the nature of the business park and on the, on the suburban type atmosphere associated with the park. In addition, you've heard from one of the adjacent property owners, Global Steering LLC, a, a large manufacturer located directly adjacent to a, to a proposed site. It's under consideration if the text amendment was approved. And through them, you heard and received a rather lengthy report from Carmody, the Law Office of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, Hennessy, located in Waterbury. That in-depth report directly contradicted the consultant's finding, summary findings of little or no impact to adjacent properties in the park and by extension to the IR zone. That report provided you with a very comprehensive framework of the, of their dissenting opinion. Taking it from state statute down to finding fault with, again, with the, with the the conclusions of the consultant. Additionally, they faulted land use staff's proposed standards as, as lacking precise controllers for evaluation and for future compliance, with I think the primary objection that it, that the generalized standards shift responsibility and interpretation for compliance with the standards to a facility operator and not, and not and not with the, not with the. We, staff finds is a conclusion that the, the organic composting facility definition serves to, while we, while we, while we assisted in putting performance standards on the, on the proposed text amendment, we also find that the on the flip side, that the, the text amendment carves out, so to speak, the organic processing facility as an exemption and does not, in the long run, address storage, manufacturing, retail sales within the IR district, which is an issue that has been, I think the commission has dealt with for, for a number of years. So in, in closing, we've provided you with a, a proposed text amendment to, to, to allow for the I'm sorry, to giving you a text amendment to allow for, for approval, but have also, under the guidance of Town Council, also given you reasons if you choose to or do not agree with the proposed, proposed approval to the text amendment, given you alternate views on, on, on a, on a disapproval, I guess I'll put it as well. I'm happy to enter, answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. That's pretty pretty conclusive on all matters where we have before us, all the commissioners have two resolutions, one in favor of the text amendment and one in opposition. The change. I, I think what we have to remember that this is something that has been before us going back last year when it first came before us as a possible site, which we said we would enjoy hearing more about it. Members of our commission did visit the Milford side of Grillo Services. Members of the commission did sit through extensive discussion from both the public and the applicant over, I believe, at least three to four different meetings. We are very interested in what Grillo Services offers. And I believe it was also economic development saying that there would be other sites other than this particular site where they would like to see Grillo Service go to and be considered. I think in a positive light, trying to say that they did not really oppose Grillo Service and its particular proposal. It is the site on which this would be located. They did alter, offer alternate sites. I don't know whether or not Grillo Service will ever consider that. I know they were extremely interested in this particular site and did put a lot of time and effort in working on this site. So in all of those matters considered, commissioners, you have two resolutions before you. One, which is to go forward with the particular site and the other with a six-page reasons for denial. It is in your hands, commissioners, at this particular point. Is there any comment?
For the chair.
Commissioner.
Marinero.
Marinero. Yes, Commissioner.
You know, li- listening to this and some of the comments, pro and con, I've heard them in the past, both sides of the comments. I always wait for the alternative business, the alternative company to come in. You know, everyone always, you know, not everyone, people say, oh, we can do this, we can have a, you know, we can have Apple come in, we can have Mike. Just never seems to pan out. And you know, I look at the effort this company's gone into and I think the site works then. And they also did purchase the site. I just, I, I see it fitting, even if it isn't perfect, I see it fitting. And it is an industrial area. I just, it's economic climate. I just don't see other people coming, taking and running a business. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, Mark Ramo.
Yes, Commissioner.
Dan DeVito just sent a email. He's unable to speak. Can we see if we could correct that? I believe he may have something he wants to say.
He, he, he can speak, but he will not be able to vote because he is not a full member.
Right, but he's muted.
As we have had in the past, alternates have attended other, all the meetings, and I know he was a participant in several of the meetings when the commissioner was absent. I would like to hear what his opinion would be, if there is no, no objection to that.
So we'd have to have Mark Musad work on unmuting him so that he can speak.
Right, I, I just unmuted him. So I think it's, okay.
I'm here now, thank you.
Okay.
So, through the chair, my, my comment is.
Commissioner, would you state your name?
Oh, yes, sorry, Dan DeVito.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So my comment is, one of the things we need to keep in mind is that we're, we're making a text amendment change for all of the IR 80 and the IR 200. I mean, our focus has been on this one piece of property, but this affects every piece of property that is in the IR 80 and IR 200.
Okay, that's your comment?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, Mark?
I, yes, Mr. Chair, that is, that is correct. While, while the focus, a lot of the times is with, especially with an applicant, is with a particular site in mind. I'm always fond of saying that the role of the commission and the role of staff in reviewing is to look at the impacts throughout the district because they are in fact District, JR in fact District Y. So this type of an operation may occur on this particular property. It could occur on any other property located within, within the zone. That is correct.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners?
Reman Antonisi.
Okay, Commissioner.
Yeah, I don't, I appreciate the Grillo's presentation. I recognize their effort. I appreciate the site visit they gave us. I don't think this is a particularly good fit for town at this time and this location particularly. I also have strong feelings about the, the neighbor who's a, a large taxpayer and has concerns about this site, which would be right next to them, adjacent to their, their property. So I, I think that, I think that the type of traffic there is, is, is also be a potential problem, and I don't, I don't, I don't see the advantage. I think that considerations we should be focusing on is the entire town, not particularly with, with all due respect to Commissioner Marinero's point, is that the use of this particular parcel shouldn't be our concern. It should be the overall effect that our zoning has on that area of town when we, when we vote to approve or disapprove of a particular application. And, you know, if they, if they can't find another use for it, you know, that's, that shouldn't be our particular problem. It should, it's, that's the zone it's in and we ought to, you know, it ought to be, you ought to be able to figure out a way to accommodate that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, and I might have missed it, but Commissioner Cavalo recused himself. Did you, should, should you appoint a commissioner to vote in his place on this particular application?
Well, I think you're, you're correct. Let's just check, how many do we have right now active members? Just check the total membership right now, one, two, three. I think he, he could be placed as a.
Well, and I, I'm sorry, I haven't, Dave Pope is, is, is present.
Dave.
I can hear you.
So that, with Dave Pope, I think that gives us our total membership.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get a sense of who would be, and maybe I'm premature. Who, who would be, what commissioners would be, would be voting when, when you get to that point?
Well, we've got Marinero, Ramo, Pope, Antonisi, Antoinette. Do we have Dizio? Is he a, is he a member?
Dizio.
Yep.
Voting member, right?
He's a voting member.
Okay, and, and possibly Commissioner DeVito as an alternate to replace Lou Cavalo.
Well, Lou Cavalo recused himself. Can we replace Lou Cavalo at this time with the Commissioner DeVito?
Yes.
Okay, that gives us 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 votes.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to check and again, when you're, maybe, forgive me if I'm premature, I didn't mean to cut off any discussion. But when, when, when we come to a vote, it probably asked just to record, we should record the votes individually so we're, so we're clear on how folks are, who's voting and how to vote, that's all.
So I'll take the liberty of just making comment while the chair is not available. So this is Mark Ramo. I have to agree with Dan DeVito and Ray Antonisi that, you know, looking at this text amendment, not specifically looking at the company, I'm concerned that this is not the right spot and that if we opened it up in this district, you know, there's a, a lot of potential issues that we may have to deal with down the road, so I don't, I could, you know, I'm really pro-business and I would love to really open this up to more businesses, but I really think by allowing this text amendment to go through that it would not be in the best interest of that district. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mark. Again, I want to make it perfectly clear that we have a total of seven regular members, four, five, six, seven. Ken Demir is being absent and we replace Ken Demir's with Mister, an, an alternate, Marinero, Commissioner Marinero is the replacement for Demir's. Or that would be the only replacement that is there. The alternates would be DeVito and Denzio. And Esposito is absent and we replaced Esposito with Anthony. And Esposito is absent, and we replaced Esposito with uh, Anthony Dez- Dizio. So there are only seven votes that will be cast here, so I see that Commissioner DeVito is not, cannot be a member, even though the permanent member has recused himself. He's still a permanent member, just recusing himself on this particular vote. Is that understandable, Mark?
Yes, sir.
And I think we should do a roll call vote so that there is clarity on who is voting. Is that an approval with commissioners?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And the total should be no more than seven. We can start the voting if we're interested in voting, but we first have to decide which resolution.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that we um, we accept, that we resolve. I don't have the resolutions in front of me, does anybody have the resolutions in front of them?
We have the, there's a six-page one, which is uh, opposed, and of, I think a four-page one, which is for approval. One other thing, since, since attorney, before we move forward, to give the courtesy to Attorney Lynch, if he has any comment, does the commission have any problem with that?
No.
Commissioners, any problem? All right, uh, I do see Attorney Lynch on camera, and if you put on his speaker, so we, if he has any comments. Attorney Lynch, do you have any comments for the commission?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the public hearing is closed, so I don't want to compromise my client's position. Uh, the only comment that I would make if the uh, commission is uh, willing to entertain this is relative to the comments that I've heard from a couple of the commissioners about the fact that the zone regulation or the text amendment uh, applies to the entire zone. And I would just remind each of the commissioners that there's, this is a two-stage process, where before you with an application for the text amendment change, and if the text amendment change is approved, then we have to come before you with an application for a special permit and a site plan approval. And I would remind you, and again, those that made the comment about they may be opposed to approving this because it is district, district uh, oriented, I would remind you that each application comes before you on a case-by-case basis. So if the regulation change is approved, then in the future, either my clients or any other applicant then has to come before you on a case-by-case basis, on a property-by-property consideration, and in considering an application for a special permit and a site plan approval, you have to look at each individual piece of property and see whether or not if another person comes in or another applicant comes in for an application for a composting facility such as what would be allowed by this text amendment. It's on a case-by-case basis, so I would ask you to just consider that in your vote, that there is a procedure that protects that in the future, if somebody comes in with a application similar to a uh, business that my client wants to do on this property on Park Road, uh, it is reviewed by you on a case-by-case basis, and if you find that a piece of property is not appropriate for a, a use such as this, then you can deny that application. So, other than that, I, I leave it to your uh, good uh, senses to consider our application and uh, appreciate those considerations, thanks.
Thank you very much, Attorney Lynch. Uh, back to uh, Commissioner Antonasi.
Um, yes, um, I move that we, we adopt a resolution denying this application for a text amendment. I don't have the date of that resolution in front of me. Um, but I would adopt it as uh, Mark Masood, our administrator of land use planning, has prepared.
I believe that, the date, Mark, do you have that in front of you, is April twenty seventh?
Point of order, if I may.
Yes, Mark.
Uh. Under, again, under guidance from uh, from, from town attorney uh, to set this up this way. So what you have in front of you is a, is a motion, is a motion to approve, a resolution, I should say, to approve. Um, so I believe the vote, and I just looked through my, uh, my final report, and I, I confirmed that I believe the proper uh, ta, proper way to handle this would be to make the mo, I know it sounds contrary, to make the motion, to make the motion to approve the text amendment, um, and then take a voice vote on that, so the majority would either be to approve it, or the majority would be to to not support approval, does that make sense?
I thought there were two resolutions.
There are not specifically two resolutions.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, all right, so, all right, so. Let's, let's make the motion, let's make the motion to approve, the, as, adopt the resolution to approve, and then take a vote on it.
Right, and.
All right, so I, I, my motion, I'm not going to make that motion at this point.
Mark, is that the six-page resolution?
Uh, no, uh, Mr. Chair, there is a, there is a separate, there is a separate resolution on the proposed text amendment.
Okay, Mark Ramo to the chair.
Yes, Mark.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution dated April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty, proposed text amendments to section twenty-seven Watertown zoning regulations, organic composting facilities as written by Mark Musad, our administrator for land use. That was my motion.
That's your motion. Do I have a second on that motion? Do I have a second on that motion? Gentlemen? Someone will have to make a second, I don't hear a second of the motion, is everybody on?
So.
Motion.
Second, I'll second it, uh, Marinero, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. And is there any further discussion on that motion? But I think you got to clear this up, Mark, I think there's a lot of confusion.
I understand, I understand, so uh, so the motion, so the motion is to, there's a motion, and there's a second to approve the text amendments. So on a voice vote, a, a yea would be to approve the amendment, uh, approve the amendments. A nay would be uh, would be to not approve the amendments, and if there were a and a major, if there was a majority saying yes, then that would be an approval. If there's a majority saying no, then the motion would fail.
Okay, and the no, the no is applying to the, all of those zones, and the yea to all of the zones.
That's correct.
Not just to this specific site?
That is correct, because you're voting, you're voting on the text amendments, that is correct.
Solely, okay, we're not then therefore considering the Grillo uh, services uh, site.
No, sir.
It's just the text amendment, okay?
Just the text amendment.
Everybody clear on that?
Positive, a positive, a vote yes would be to approve the text amendments. A vote no would be, in essence, to deny or not approve the text amendments.
Thank you, I think that's pretty clear. Okay, we'll do that by, I think, a roll call. Is that a court, a court with the members of the commission?
Yes.
The two.
Pretty clear.
The two alternates that are going to be voting are Anthony Denzil and also Robert Marinero. Robert Marinero is for Ken Demir's, and Anthony Denzil is for Lou Esposito. I believe that's the way it was set up.
And, and Dan DeVito is not voting, is that correct?
He is not voting, we only have seven members, voting members.
Two, three, four, five, six, I'm sorry, I'm only finding six, so Ray, Richard.
I'll, I'll go through.
I got him, I got him here. We got Bob Marinero, Mark Ramo, Lou, uh, Dave Pope, I'm sorry, right, Dave Pope, uh, Ray Antonasi, Richard Antonetti, Anthony Dizio. One, two, three, four, five, six, six.
Can't be.
Right.
I'm going to count them again, uh, for Dizio, one. Number two, Marinero, number three, Antonetti, number four, Ramo, number five, Antonasi, number six, uh, Pope, number seven, for S, uh, seven is uh, Cavallo, Cavallo is uh, uh, recused himself. So you have one recusal was Cavallo, that's the seven people.
Five, six.
Six voting, one uh, recused.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify, so that is six.
Don't you want seven to vote?
No, you don't. Well, one is recused, the, the recusal.
Put Dan DeVito in. Make it seven, no?
No, because uh, a recusal is not removing him from the member of the commission, he's just not voting on this issue, that's all. I don't think you just can pop somebody in and out.
I thought it was done in the past many times.
Who said that?
Dave Pope.
Oh, Dave, you're here, there we are.
Been here the whole time.
Well. I'm one. Maybe, maybe you need a legal opinion, uh, I'll go to the lawyer, how about it, Antonasi? What's, what's your decision, Judge?
Excuse me for one second.
Surely. Antonasi.
You talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, wow, um. Well, if, if he's, if DeVito's, my opinion is that if DeVito has sat through all these meetings and heard all, everything, okay? Uh, and, and is aware of all the evidence, okay, that's been presented at all the public hearings, I think he's an eligible voter. And a recusal, and a recusal is a recusal, and we, if we, if we have, if we, no, you know, it's, it's, that's my, you know, that's my off-the-seat-of-my-pants tough opinion, okay? We can, we can also see what we have with six without risking the seventh, uh, you know, it's, it's something that we should have considered beforehand, obviously, but we did.
But we, we haven't run into this situation and uh, before. Uh, with the six voting.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mr. Chairman, important point of order, please, can I just make an inquiry?
Surely.
Is.
That's Attorney Lynch speaking.
Yes, thank you, and this is just a point of order question, is it, is Commissioner DeVito part of this meeting? He, did he call in, I thought he emailed into this meeting.
No, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like that for you, uh, Attorney Lynch.
Yeah, I, I, I would rather see you avoid the confusion and just put the vote off until next month, but that's just my, my feeling.
I think, I, my point of order, I think, I think we should vote on this and, and um, and move it along, include Attorney DeVito, I mean, Danny DeVito as a um, as a, as a voting member.
Okay.
You know.
Any objection to, to replacing uh, putting Danny DeVito on for Commissioner Cavallo? Anybody object? Okay, uh, Commissioner DeVito. You are, you are an acting member of the commission.
On this particular item.
You will be able to vote on this specific item, okay?
Got it.
Hey, you want a roll, of a roll call vote, Mark, please mark it down as the vote is called, start.
Uh, Ray Antonasi.
I uh, vote no, not to approve.
Richard Antonetti.
No.
Richard Antonetti is a no. Uh, Bob Marinero.
Yes.
Bob Marinero is a yes. Uh, Dave Pope.
No.
Dave Pope is a no. Uh, Mark Ramo.
No.
Mark Ramo is a no. Uh, Anthony Dizio.
Uh, no.
Is a no, and uh, Dan DeVito.
No.
Is a no, one, two, three, four, five, six nos, and one yes, so the motion fails to pass.
Motion therefore fails in a six-one vote. Let us uh, then move on to any other matters on the agenda, Mark.
Thank you, Attorney Lynch.
Thank you.
Attorney Lynch.
Thank you.
For, 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 for this application, I'm sorry, it turned out the way it did.
Okay.
Okay.
Where do we, let's see, so far, we got the Lynch and then.
Around that whole business, number two, Attorney Pelosi, site plan modification.
We did that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did it. Highview Estates, we did that also.
I'm just. Highview Estates, um, Mr. Chair, that is uh, for a bond retainer, and we request that you uh,
Is he in there?
As you uh, pass on that, uh, on that matter.
We'll table it.
Yes, that's what I was looking for.
Hey, I have a motion to table, uh, Highview uh, Estates uh, uh, retainer of one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-seven cents, we have a motion to table.
Mark Ramo votes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 The opposition, extensions, motions carried unanimously. I think we're almost done here, let's go to the next page. Okay, the next page, we have, Wook Road is done, I believe. Uh, Ten Acre Mill Mall is done. We did site plan for Main Street two thirty-five. We did Thera Plant, I, gentlemen, I think that gets an informal discussion. And uh, just uh, as part of informal discussion, I did have a conversation today uh, with the owners of uh, the winery, Hawk Ridge. Uh, they were sad to inform me that the plans that they had for Father's Day with the auto show and all the plans that were laid there have been canceled because of the uh, virus, and because of the ruling of uh, social distancing and et cetera, they will try to put it on in September. The auto show that they had planned for Father's Day, if things are cleared up with this virus. So the, it's now on hold. They did say that later this month they will be open up the winery for business without any other complications from the state. There is high hopes that after the 20th of May, more businesses will be able to get opened if our good governor sees fit. So that is some good news. Also...
Mr. Chairman?
Who's speaking?
Did not settle up the Blazius matter. That was, we closed the public hearing, but we didn't address it.
We didn't vote on that one yet?
We did not.
There's all two other matters.
What's that?
There's two other matters that haven't, there's three matters that haven't been voted on.
We closed the hearings on those. That was, that, that's what you're speaking of. Franklin.
There's, there's three matters to be voted on.
The, your property.
The text change, the site plan modification to 235 Main Street, and the Blazius matters haven't been voted yet.
Okay, let's go back then to the Blazius matter. There were outstanding issues, and you said the, in favor of whatever has to be done there?
Yes, the motion as drafted is acceptable with the additions that we discussed.
Okay. Everybody got that particular motion? Blazius motion? That's the Kia one, and I believe it's a resolution.
I've got it here. Okay. It's a law motion. There was me a second.
Everybody ready to go? Do I have a second on the Blazius motion?
I'm sorry, who made, Ray, did you make the motion?
I have a motion.
Right, he's making the motion.
Right, I, I'll, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution prepared by Mark Masood, Administrator for Land Use and Building Services, dated April 27th, 2020, for 699 Straits Turnpike Site Plan and Special Permit Standard Review, Blazius Motors LLC.
Who's second?
Second.
Ray, with, with the conditions and it's listed in the addendum.
The addendum, right.
Or Blazius.
Yes, with all the conditions as listed in the addendum, sorry.
Who made the second? Please state your name. Dave Pope. Thank you, Dave. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, abstain. Motion for Kia is carried unanimously. Okay, the other one now is dealing with...
The Bo District, should be a... But not vote on that.
The Bo District text amendment and the site plan modification for 235 Main Street are the two that didn't vote yet.
Okay.
So it's item number three.
All right, those are the...
We closed the hearing on Loop Road. For DeBona, did we vote on that one?
That was set for, that was Loop Road, that was, wasn't that set for a public hearing?
No, we had hearing. We closed the public hearing, and then I asked, did we vote on it? Who's keeping record on the votes?
Well, we, that was, my, my, all right, that was unanimously voted for.
Loop Road.
Loop Road, yes.
Okay, so we now got Loop Road voted for, Kia voted for. Right now, we're looking at the impervious service, and that's the parking lot where we wanted to, that's it, the additional four parking spaces increased to 16. And they wanted to eliminate the four to just have the 16 spaces. And that, the summary of that one, and there is a short resolution.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, what we did with Loop Road was we closed the public hearing. So we haven't voted on the, we have not voted on it yet. So we need to vote on the approval.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, so therefore, in consideration of that, I make a motion for approval in accordance with the resolution prepared by Mark Masood, Administrator for Land Use, dated May 2nd, 2020, for the, we submitted an application for Anthony DeBona, Lot 7R Loop Road located in the R30 zoning district.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Could you state your name on the seconds, please?
Dave Pope.
Thank you, Dave.
No problem.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Extension on, motion on Loop Road is carried unanimously. Now let's go to the parking. It is a very short resolution. That was made, or that this was drafted, a proposal for additional, there's four parking spaces, but I don't believe they want four parking spaces. They want 16.
Yeah, that was, Mr. Chairman, that was a, acon on my part. It should be, it should be 16 parking spaces is what this, I believe the site plan is showing. But it's been pointed out to me, that's what the site plan shows.
And it's an increase in impervious coverage to 64.1%. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have, I have in front of me two resolutions. I have one resolution for the text amendment to a 70% impervious coverage. And I have another revolution, a resolution, pardon me, for a, a, a site, site plan modification. One's dated May 4th and then stated May 1st. Which one are we acting on? Are we acting on both?
May 4th.
May 4th? All right.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution prepared by Mark Masood, Administrator for Land Use, dated May 4th, 2020, for the proposed addition of parking spaces and increasing the impervious coverage to 64.1% on the site of, as presented to the commission.
Do I have a second? Please state your name.
Mark Ramo, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, abstain. Here you go.
I think you have to vote on the text amendment also.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. He said do this, do the May 4th one. All right, all right, I make a resolution. I make a motion that we have, for the, we adopt the resolution of Mark Masood, Administrator for Land Use, dated May 1st, 2020, for the to amend the text to approve the maximum impervious surface coverage in the Bo District.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Luigi's trying to get back in. He doesn't know how to get back in.
Luigi, all they have to do is let you come back in and you can vote. And that means DeVito, you have to step out.
All right.
Luigi. You're not back yet. Luigi.
Hold on one second, Mr. Chair.
Your second has passed. Luigi is on. I got him. He just, he is back. Luigi, are you here?
Hello?
Hi.
Okay.
I'm back, I think.
You are back.
That Luigi Fisher Calavaro came back at about 8:37. Is that correct? Mark, you have the time?
It is 8:31.
31.
Yep.
Mark Ramo, here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Ramo. There was a motion made by Commissioner Antonasi. I'd like to second that motion, so we can move this along.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, abstain. Motion is carried unanimously. We don't have to vote on the matter of the Kmart. We just, was the matter of the approval. Am I correct, Mark?
You approved that previously, Mr. Chair.
And I believe we do not have to do anything more with Thera plant. We are done with that.
Yes.
I'm just doing a, a house cleaning. And I...
Thank you very much. Thank you, Pelosi. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I think that brings us to the next point on the agenda. As I was saying, we were going over the last part of the agenda, which is just update of issues, informal discussion, just to let you know about the winery and that particular project. Mark was checking on the Watertown stage. They're moving ahead on that. Mark, I believe you said they're moving ahead on the Watertown stage?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, they do appear, I'm told. It does appear there is work ongoing on the Watertown stage, that's correct.
And I think those are important events to try to keep the town moving ahead. I think we had a very good meeting tonight. It's the first time, but we did do it in, I think, good time. But we, it was close to 8:35. And they had us timed in here. We got still time. We can be on here at the clock if you have any more comments. But I know Dave Pope, Commissioner Pope is probably saying, Antonetti, we would like to say adjourn. Am I right?
Yes, you're right.
How come your picture is not up here? I'm looking for you.
I don't know. I... Mark, Mark X'd me out.
He's, Mr. Chairman, he's digitally challenged.
He's digitally challenged, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I did have one question for Mark. I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of people in public asking about the, the solar panels and the landscaping around them and when that will be complete. Does he have any input on that?
For, for which, which project?
Judson and Swift.
Dave?
There's Dave.
The... It, the last conversations I had on both of them were probably two weeks or so ago, just before the, really the planting season. And the contractor indicated that they were making contract with subcontractors to finish landscaping. So now that we're into the beginning of May, I would expect that though, that the landscaping would be performed, let's say, within a month in both, both projects.
Great. Do you know if they're going to stay in the fence or anything, or is that going to remain raw?
I do not know.
Okay. Thank you.
I do not. You're welcome.
Any other comments from commissioners? It's been a great, great meeting. Appreciate all the effort put in by Mark, down at his office. I can tell you, he's been working very hard. He was hoping there'd be no glitches, and I think we sort of got by without any glitches in this meeting. So for all...
Other than not having Dave's visual for...
Okay, well, thank you. We're all, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Mark Ramo.
Second, Ray Antonasi.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Good night, all.
Have a good night.
I think it's much better than I expected. I thought there would be more, more glitches, but it seemed to go fairly smoothly in my opinion. Thank you all for your help.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Have a good night.
X, x, x. Oh my God.
Rhetorical question? No, no. He totally saw the face of God.